And we've got a quorum, so let's get started. I'm going to call the meeting of the December 2nd meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission to order. Begin with introductions of planning commissioners, Scott Nelson, District 3, Don.
On the hand, District 1.
Tile.
Tile's Husky at large.
Doug.
Doug Carmen, District 2.
Eric.
Eric Casino, District 2.
And Jim.
Jim Simmons, District 3.
Okay, I think that's everybody. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don move.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from November 18th and accept the audio as the official record?
Don move.
Zach.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, public communications. For those of you that haven't been here, if you raise your hand, we'll call on you. We have three minutes. On mute you, please tell us your name and where you're from at the beginning of your statement and we will start with Patrick Townsend. Oh, honey. On mute, yeah, okay.
Uh, thank you, Scott. Commissioners, this is Patrick Townsend in Boston Harbor. I'm a shoreline property owner. I want to address the topic of plastics today. We submitted earlier today comments about the use of plastics in aquaculture operations with a link to several studies, scientific studies related to the use of plastics. It's clear that plastics are a toxic pollution, create toxic pollution in marine waters and it's a, it's certainly a problem that shouldn't be ignored. Just for context, I just want to make sure we all have a clear picture of this. A one acre gooey duck farm uses approximately seven miles of PVC, which is approximately 16 tons if they're using PVC. Set your odometer the next time you go into town and go seven miles and think about a solid pipe of PVC that distance. It's a huge amount of plastics. And that's just for a one acre operation and there are many, many operations in South Puget Sound. So this is truly an unacceptable impact on the environment. There's no question that we experience a lot of unintended plastic in our marine waters, trash from a number of sources. What we don't need is intentionally inserting massive amounts of plastic into our marine environment. We have a tremendous problem with pollution in this respect. We should not be embedding this in regulations. There is a sustainable path for aquaculture. We certainly support that. We can see operations in Puget Sound that are truly sustainable. We need to lean in that direction, I believe, to preserve the wonderful assets we have here in Thurston County in terms of our ecology. I've heard complaints about the unfairness of the regulations. In fact, these operations are almost completely unmonitored. Thurston County has said in testimony before a hearing that they have no staff to do monitoring and they don't do monitoring. They rely on citizens to point out problems, but then no action is taken. So these are not monitored. The ACOE also admitted that it monitors extremely few of these operations. It's part of ecology, DNR, DFW, same thing. So aquaculture, in fact, is one of the least monitored critical operations around. So I think we need to put this all in perspective. What we truly need in Thurston County is a positive vision of the future. We have emerging ecologically sustainable farming in this county. We have a sustainable livestock operations. We need to attract modern knowledge-based businesses. And to do that, we really have to focus on a positive ecology. So I just would ask that the use of plastics be eliminated from the SMP. And this is compatible with what other organizations of environmental organizations have said too. So thank you very much for this opportunity to comment.
Lynn Lanewett.
Hello, my name is Bob Lanewett. I'm using Lynn Lanewett's computer and I live on Holmes Island Road. I want to take just a moment of your time to reference paragraph 19, 400, 100 of the proposed SMP. I prefer the term conforming for labeling structures, lots and uses for these reasons. One, the term non-conforming is a negative term that is, in my opinion, unnecessary in this document. It labels structures in a way that just doesn't permit or allow for goodwill. As mentioned by one of the senior planners, it is only a term. And so then if it's a term, then it could only a term, then it could be changed to a more friendly term and that would be conforming. A less non-prejudicial term. And if you think about it, many new structures would meet the code requirements and they would be labeled or should be labeled conforming and not non-conforming. Many older properties that would have modifications that would be approved by the county would be conforming and should be labeled conforming and not be labeled non-conforming. And some properties would not change at all. And so they were conforming and should be continued to be labeled conforming. I just think that the use of non-conforming just brings a negative aspect to your document that is not necessary. So I, I thank you for the work that you've done and I thank you for listening to me. Have a, have a nice evening.
Okay. Okay, Phyllis Farrell.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And am I the only one that's just getting a view of the bookcase of Polly Stoker? I'm missing the rest of the commissioners there, but.
No, that should be it, just because we, we put the timer up so everybody can see.
Okay, I'll start now then. Thank you. Greetings, Commissioners. My name is Phyllis Farrell. I live in the Sunwood Lakes neighborhood of an incorporated Thurston County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the draft SMP. I've provided written and oral comments previously, so I will be brief. The SMA requires the SMPs to provide for quote, no net loss. This is not happening as evidenced by our declines in water quality, forged fish habitat, declines in salmon stocks and endangered orca populations. Recent legislative proposals included efforts to address these issues due and to recover the state's endangered salmon runs, which can be traced to the lack of rigor in the state and local environmental regulations. I believe Mr. Townsend referred to that earlier. The argument the state's current no net loss approach to environmental standards has failed and that we must institute a net ecological gain standard. House Bill 2550 proposed in 2020 provided the development of a plan to incorporate this new net ecological gain standard into existing environmental development and land use law such as the Shoreline Management Act and the Growth Management Act. And also decided as the policy of the state to pursue a net ecological gain standard where currently possible through state agencies. Although the bill did not pass, there was a budget proviso of $256,000 for the Department of Fish and Wildlife to create a report and make recommendations. It is expected that including climate change and net gain standards will be a priority in future legislative efforts. Why not be preemptive and ask for this language in Thurston County's draft SMP? Reducing buffers will impact shoreline ecological function and hamper no net loss provisions. I can't imagine the Department of Ecology will approve reductions in buffers. You should not be recommending any reductions in shoreline buffers, especially marine shorelines prone to climate change, sea level rise projections. Please ask the staff to identify the provisions in the draft SMP that address no net loss. Please, if they're not there, please encourage language to provide for adequate assessment, monitoring and enforcement. Thank you for your time and service.
Okay, John Woodford.
Commissioners, this is John Woodford. I live on Holmes Island on Long Lake. First, I just want to follow up on my letter and also the events of the November 18th meeting. The Coalition feels that the draft postcard that was presented is totally inefficient. There's no mention whatsoever of redesignation and we are hoping to see an updated draft of that notification. The impact on people who don't get this resolved, however that's going to happen now, is going to be a real shock a couple of years from now when they go to apply for a building permit and find out that their property's been re-designated. Now to chapter 19, 400. The entire introductory paragraph should be deleted and all other references to legally non-conforming should be stricken from the document. Conforming should replace legally non-conforming. In my letter of August 31st to the Planning Commission, I quoted from RCW 90.58.620, which states that residential structures that were legally established or are used for, for a conforming use shall be considered conforming structures. I see no reason at all, despite the arguments that Brad Murphy made some time ago, that there was conflict with other county regulations. But he also has said that the SMP takes precedent over all other regulations. Another item is the limitation of 500 square feet for any landward expansion of a building that is within the buffer. There is no such requirement proposed by ecology. And this has, has no basis and should be removed. Section 19, 400, 115 on critical areas. Again, I think Andy said he was going to take a look at this, but Brad Murphy stated back in June 7th of 2017 that updated SMPs are to provide the sole regulation for critical areas in shoreline jurisdiction. The whole question of buffers be or setbacks being added to buffers should be looked at in terms of the items that I mentioned before about the difference between setback and buffers. There are a couple of other things, but the last thing I just want to point out. Hopefully staff will see that the at the undertakings of the December 16th meeting will go kind of easy or maybe even cancel. We've been dealing in the pandemic. It's nine days before Christmas. Hanukkah will have begun on December 10th and ends on December 18th. And I think we all need a little break from this with the stress we've been under with the pandemic and everything else. Thank you for your consideration. Good night.
And then we've got one other. I'm looking to see if he's here. Mark.
He's here. Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you. So this is Mark Hancock representing Sigali Properties and I appreciate the chance to touch base again tonight on our favorite topic. Three quick things. One is some of you may recall an advertisement on TV sometime back for an oil change company where they said you can pay me now or you can pay me later. The point being that if you look ahead, you're going to change your oil in your car and if you don't, the car will eventually break down. I feel the same thing is happening with the 2,700 people that are going to be essentially down zoned, even though I know that's not the right word. When they're, when they're changed to natural and I'm concerned that if you don't think ahead on this issue, you're going to be and you're going to have a lot of difficulties later. Specifically, if you don't tell them clearly upfront on the postcard and other materials, what's going on and how they're going to be badly impacted, then they're not going to know and they're going to have to find out in the newspaper. When they do, you're going to end up with a ton of people at your hearing and they're not going to be happy. I can tell you from experience and a couple of you know about what 15 years ago when this happened on the CAO, it wasn't until people found out in the newspaper that a thousand people showed up at the Planning Commission hearing. They were angry. They were upset. It took about three nights to finish the hearing and it made the front page headlines of the Olympian. So if you really need to start thinking ahead on this and getting these people on board or you're going to end up on the front page of the Olympian like last time. Secondly, tonight in the code, you have section 19, 400, 120B, which are buffer widths. And under natural, it has freshwater lakes at 200 feet, which if of course is the entire shoreline zone, which at 200 feet in natural means you can't do anything, essentially anything, not much. It's just below that. It's reduced to 150 feet under the buffer adjustment possibilities. However, if you read the fine print, you can't do anything. You can't go to the 150 feet in natural unless there's something wrong with your parcel. That's the case, even if you only want to build a house and even if you can, with only one house on five or more acres, you can do no net loss with your mitigation. So even if you can no net loss to mitigate, you're still not, still not allowed in this language to, to put a house on five acres within the 200 feet. So my point would be is that the wax, what's driving this comment is that the wax allow a house inside of natural. And it's in the, you can read the wax, it's in the language. But in the language before you, in the prior sections in this one, the county has gone against the state with more restrictive code. They will not allow a house under almost any circumstances within the 200 feet of natural, unless there's something wrong with the parcel, even if you can mitigate with no net loss. So that's contrary to the direction that you, that the county has on this update. There's supposed to be a simple update. It's not adding more restrictions. You've asked staff for a list of the differences between the state and the county regs that are being proposed. Now, I don't believe you have that list and I think you still need to insist on that list for all of our sakes. Thanks a lot. Thanks for all your work and patience on this thing. Take care.
Okay. That's all the hands I see. So let's go. Oh, we got one more. Somebody signed in as admin.
Hello, hello everyone. Sorry about that. When I signed on to Zoom, it defaulted to admin. I failed to change it. My name's Alan Bennett. I live on Long Lake and I'm calling in regard to the red designation. Kind of echoing what John and Mark have stated. It's better to be more transparent for our residents that are on the lake. Many people don't receive a newspaper and wouldn't read the, the updates. If it weren't for the email chains that I'm on, I would be less informed myself. And I would hate to be shocked at the last minute to be truthful with you if properties were re-designated and I got caught without, without raising my hand to find out what was more, more important before or after. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners for the work you've done. We appreciate the, all the time you guys put into this and we hope that we can straighten all the SMP out before the, before it's all signed off. Thank you very much.
Okay. Don't see anybody else. So let's move on to our work session for the shoreline master plan.
Okay, great. Hello, everybody. Andy Defovas, Community Planning. So tonight, the Planning Commission will continue its review of the updated shoreline master program document dated October 21st, 2020. Staff are looking for specific feedback to incorporate into the draft, including any text changes or options for the public hearing you'd like to see based on your review of the document and comments you've received. At the November 18th meeting, we covered chapter 19, 300. And so tonight we will review 19, 400 and 500 or as far as, as we get with that. Also, we'd like to save some time at the end to have a little bit of discussion about the open house postcard. After the last planning commission meeting, staff forwarded you the document that I had put up on the screen and with some additional language to consider. So we'd be happy to circle back and hear your thoughts on, on that. You received written comments from Taylor Shellfish and from the Coalition for Shoreline Property Owners ahead of this meeting, which were forwarded to you and put up on the website. I do see that Patrick Townsend submitted comments this afternoon. So we will get those forwarded to you and also included on the planning commission website as part of the testimony that was received for this meeting. Okay. And so before we dive into the chapter 19, 400, I wanted to try to provide a better explanation of the interplay between the shoreline master program and the critical areas ordinance. Hopefully answer the questions that you have and some of the questions that the public has had, or at least get a really good understanding of what information the planning commission might still need on this topic or just to be a good start to the conversation. Here we go. Currently, you might be asking yourself, how does this work and how's it going to work after the update? So basically right now, in December 2nd, 2020, both documents may apply to your property. You might be on the shoreline and the SMP could apply and the critical areas ordinance could also apply. As we're all aware, the current shoreline master program was adopted in 1990. However, when the county's critical areas ordinance update was adopted in 2012, it updated the buffers for marine shorelines, except for rural shorelines and also for shoreline streams. Lake buffers continue to be regulated by the SMP. However, wetlands associated with lakes are subject to the critical areas ordinance. Today, development standards from both documents could apply. If you're, if you're building something that's in the water or very close to the water, you might have development standards from both documents that apply. And permits could be required under both programs. So the, the big picture looking forward is that with the shoreline master program update, the statutory intent is that the updated shoreline master program will supersede the critical areas ordinance. The, the shoreline master program will be the only document of those two documents that applies in shoreline jurisdiction. But exactly how critical areas are protected is what's changing. So the draft critical areas, they remain protected. So after the update, you know, we will have a new shoreline master program, but, but the, the need to protect critical areas does not go away. The draft shoreline master program incorporates protections for critical areas by including language that currently lives in the CAO. 19, chapter 19, 400 of the SMP draft states that it includes which chapters of the 2012 critical areas ordinance are to be incorporated into the SMP. And those chapters will be an appendix to the shoreline master program in perpetuity. So all that language will be connected forever until the next update. 19, 400 then goes into further detail about the various types of critical areas and points to specific provisions in the critical areas ordinance in the SMP. But at the end of the day, post-update, the shoreline master program will have sole permitting authority for all the areas within shoreline jurisdiction. There will be no more need for critical area permits. The intent is that there is one document and one permitting system that controls within shoreline master program jurisdiction, including critical areas within that jurisdiction. So the big picture to keep in mind is that if a site has critical areas and it's within shoreline jurisdiction, those critical areas are protected now and they will still be protected after the update. It's exactly how, how we do that is what's changing. So I think to provide clarity when talking about the relationship between critical areas and shorelines, rather than saying that after the update, the CAO still applies, we should be saying that critical areas that are located in shoreline jurisdiction will still be protected after the update by the SMP. And I'm, you know, certainly going to take that to heart and try to make sure I'm stating it that way as well. Cause I think that's a better reflection probably than how I've been characterizing it in the past. So I'd like to pause here and take questions on that and hopefully that's a good start for some good conversation.
Sounds to me as though you went in the circle. Why can't, you know?
So, okay, I think.
Why can't we include? Or we include and then we talk, we, the group commissioners talk about whether we want to change what is said in the CAO relative to wetlands. That's, I mean, I don't understand why because the CAO definitely states that it comes to the SMP. That the responsibility for wetlands associated with shorelines belongs in the SMP. And now we bring it back.
It, well, and it's, I think it's a, what's the word? At some point, it, it, it becomes semantics to some degree. So the critical areas ordinance as a document will not apply. It is the, the pieces of that doc, it's, it won't apply in whole, right? It's, we are taking those, so that language was, was adopted in 2012. And when we did it, it was done with, with shorelines in mind, knowing that the shoreline master program update would be coming, knowing that if ecology is going to approve the entire package, you know, they, they're going to need to make sure that our protections for critical areas meet the standards of the SMP guidelines. And so those relevant sections of that document are coming into the SMP, but the critical areas ordinance will not apply. So we're, we're pulling them in, we're pulling in that language. That is, you know, the way that this draft was constructed was to take these chap, the relevant chapters and include them by reference in the, in the draft itself and then as an appendix. So that, you know, staff can refer to the appropriate place. It will all live as one big document. And when it gets codified through, you know, Muni code, it will all be one big, one big piece. So, you know, jurisdictions have options for how these things are put together. But at the end of the day, you know, critical areas must still be protected. And that is done by pulling in those pieces that were, you know, updated back in 2012. I hope that helps.
No, I got it. Okay. How many pages is it?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
How difficult would it be for us to have, add that as a section to the SMP? People don't, you know, one of the problems with all this, these regulations is for us, for normal people is that you do this and then you refer to this and then you refer to that and then you refer to that and then you refer to that. I mean, it takes you three days just to find the stuff you refers to. So why not include it in the SMP and not by inclusion of paragraphs or something, actually put it in like the CAO said.
Yeah. I mean, that is, that is a way that jurisdictions could choose to do their SMP update. So the draft as it currently exists, it was, it was done by, you know, referencing those chapters and then, you know, incorporating them at the end as an appendix. And you're right, it doesn't, it does, it does refer to them, but you know, it, it tells you where to go. So I would be curious as to what the rest of the planning commission is, says on that score. Because that's, you know, what you're referencing by saying, can we take these standards and put them in the document itself that it's, you know, it's a whole separate undertaking. And so I'm curious what other folks think about that, you know, before we would go down that path.
I just wanted to say that, you know, it's good to have a certain language in one spot. So you don't have to, to update it in multiple places, right? So it could be a nightmare trying to, to update different sections in different locations and so.
For somebody who's not really familiar with all this stuff, if you're going to put the protections in the SMP, why do you need a critical areas ordinance?
So you don't need the critical area, the, the ordinance itself, the, that whole regulatory program will not apply within shoreline jurisdiction. The critical areas must still be protected. Ecology and the legislature intend that the SMP becomes the sole document to regulate. Ecology and the legislature intend that the SMP becomes the sole document to regulate all critical areas within shoreline jurisdiction. It's just how, how that's done. And so we have, we have, so think about it this way. You have, you know, you have shorelines, you have a lake, or you have a stream. Well, that property may also have wetlands within shoreline jurisdiction. It might have steep slopes or something like that, and those are still protected. It's just how are, how are you going to do that protection? And we have a document that has chapters specifically related to the protection of those critical areas. And so the way this, this draft was constructed was to just take that chapter and say, you know, if you've got a lake, you know, these are your development standards, but if there's a wetland or if there's, you know, a steep slope or something like that, that's within shoreline jurisdiction, these other regulations still apply. You know, and, and so they're incorporated at the end as an appendix. Because at the end of the day, those areas still must be protected. So it's, you know, but it's recognizing that there, you have shorelines that are shoreline jurisdiction that the state calls out, you know, your lakes, your streams, your marine water bodies, but then you also have critical areas that are related. And so it's making sure that all of those things are covered within the document.
And moving from one document to another does not give the opportunity to diminish the best available science used to establish the protective standards that were adopted back in 2012. So cross-referencing is the most efficient way to maintain those standards, because if in the future we get new science and we need to do a periodic update, we're required to update our critical areas regulations on a schedule and to take a look at the new science and to make sure we're being as protective as the science requires for the functions and values of the critical areas. We don't want to have to be going to multiple places necessarily to do that. I mean, I think that's what Tile was talking about, and that's a, it's a point of efficiency. Cutting and pasting pieces of the Critical Areas Ordinance into the SMP. And I don't know if other jurisdictions have done it that way. I think it's a little less efficient. But I understand what you're saying, that is difficult, you know, as a property owner to understand that different sets of regulations apply, but that would be the same for, you know, the building permits and the construction and the stormwater management. And I think you're always going to have multiple places. You're going to have to go for a development project, unfortunately. But I think where we can streamline it and make it very clear, I think that's a note that we can take as staff and comb through and make sure it is not burdensome to have the cross-referencing. And of course, if a majority of the Planning Commission wants to go in a different direction, we could hear that tonight and do a little more research and see how other places have done it and bring back some more information next time. That's also a possibility.
And also. When is the CAO going to be updated next?
That's a great question. I can look that up.
I think, yeah, I don't know the, I don't know the year that the next update is due, but I do know that in the last year or so, we made, the county made the assessment that it did not need to be updated at this point. So it would be in another, probably another six to seven years, I would think, but maybe Jennifer has the.
Yeah, I'll look. It might, it's, the comp plan's updated every like eight years. So let me look it up and I'll get back to you.
But is the truth that the CAO will need to be updated before the SMP is updated again pretty high? Like the net, like we, say we finish off SMP in the next couple of months. Will we be reviewing SMP again next or CAO next? I mean, are we going to be able to push out a CAO update for 10 years when we are only going to be able to push out a SMP update eight years?
I'm not sure about that, Eric. And, you know, as you know, the SMP update is, it's behind. So I'm hoping that we get this done and it's not, you know, that we don't have to turn around and do it fairly quickly again. But I think SMP is on an eight-year cycle and critical areas are.
I think they're also on an eight-year cycle, and I'm trying to find out right now if they're synced up or not.
I guess where I'm getting at with all this is if we go through and we finish this SMP update, and in this SMP update, we, we reference critical areas and instead of putting them in directly, we could effectively be changing our SMP by changing our critical areas later. So we can, we could go through this whole thing and the first part of 2021 have an SMP that's finished. But if we start doing CAO stuff in 2022, we will effectively be changing what we did, or we could be changing what we did for SMP 2021.
I am so glad you brought that up, because that was something that I researched today. And basically, that won't happen, because the SM, or the, the sections of the Critical Areas Ordinance that, that would, are proposed to be put into the SMP, they are, it's, it's the date-stamped version. It's as, as they were adopted on, you know, July 24, 2012. And so if there is an update to the Critical Areas Ordinance on a separate track after the SMP, that does not change the SMP, excuse me, does not change the CAO, any of that language that was put into the SMP. And the reason for that is that ecology, they're the ones who have to bless this entire Shoreline Master Program piece at the end of the day. And, you know, they have to ensure that any critical area protections that are in the whole package are meeting all the ecology guidelines. And so they wouldn't want the jurisdiction to be able to update the CAO and make changes that they don't have a chance to approve and that ultimately don't meet the SMP guidelines.
That's exactly where I was going at.
Right. So, so, and that was, when I started the day, that was something I did not know or did not have at the forefront of my brain, and now, now I do. So it would be a snapshot. And as I alluded to in previous meetings, there probably are, there are going to be some very minor amendments to the CAO that come forward to you all in the near future, that basically references and wayfinding and things like that, that are, you know, needed with this update. It's not, it's kind of clerical type stuff. But ultimately, whatever we put in that appendix E of this document as the critical area protections as enshrined, that's, that's going to be what lives with perpetuity until we update again. And so in the next Shoreline Master Program update, if, if, if in the intervening years, and let's say in three years, if in three years we have a whole new CAO for whatever reason, if there is need to, to look at that, or there may be a need to look at that then in the next SMP update eight years down the line. So you're right, it would be part of that package that we deal with at that time. But just because one changes, you know, in the near future, doesn't, doesn't change the SMP until we officially do that, and the Planning Commission is, is part of that process.
Okay, you've effectively answered my question on that. Thank you.
Great.
My vote is that we include it directly as a section. Then it, then the SMP actually does what it's supposed to do. It keeps everything in context. By reference, it's now we're going out of context into another document. And by having it in the document, it's all tied together.
I agree with Doug that having everything all in one space is going to make life on citizens much easier.
All right. How, how do other folks feel?
I can't help but agree that one source is, is best.
Okay, and I think.
Well, I think, I mean, I think it would be easier every day, but my other concern is how, how much, what Eric was talking about, how much back and forth are we going to have to do when we're updating each of these? Updating other stuff. And I mean, I think as long as it's, especially now, I think if we, if it's going to be online and it has links, that would be much easier to just click on the link.
So the entire thing would be, so yeah, I mean, there will be links to it from the website, but you know, when it gets all codified, because all of those Critical Areas Ordinance regulations are, or critically, stop saying ordinance, because all the Critical Areas Regulations are part of the Shoreline Master Program and, you know, need to be referable by the staff and by the public, all that stuff will be codified together. So, you know, you'll, you'll have Title 19, the Shoreline Master Program, that will be updated on our county code website. And the, all the appendices should be there, or all the appendices that are, you know, regulatory for that document. Because if staff, you're right, I mean, if staff, it needs to look at a parcel that has a lake and a wetland on it, they need to be looking at all the regulations for both of those features. And, you know, they would both be on the county code website. So whether they're in, whether it's in the further up in the draft or whether it's an appendix, it's all going to live together.
We might choose to have different standards for wetlands attached to water bodies versus those that are sitting out in a prairie someplace. That's another reason for having it in the document. It might be the same, but there might be additional requirements if it's attached to, to shorelines versus being out in the, in the prairie. It might be less, I, you know, but this body ought to be able to look at that instead of grouping it all the same. It's just like the difference between a marine environment and a lake environment. They're totally different. And the shoreline function is different, and how it reacts to the water body is different.
I think it'll be interesting to see if we get any further comment from ecology on that, on that score. I know in talking with them, so when we updated the Critical Areas Ordinance in 2012, we were doing so with a mind that, you know, the SMP update was coming, that SMP comprehensive updates ultimately control critical areas within shoreline jurisdiction. And we knew that was coming when we were writing that document all those years ago. And I know anecdotally in talking to Sarah, you know, she said the Critical Areas Ordinance for Thurston County is in pretty good shape. And, you know, I went back and looked at her comments on the program as a whole, the draft master program. She didn't really have a lot of substantive comments on those critical area provisions. So I think it would be interesting to that point you made about whether there needs to be a difference in critical area regulations closer to shorelines versus further away. I think it might be instructive to see what they would say about that.
Can I just point out, I wanted to read from the RCW that ecology is going to, shall approve a segment of the master program relating to critical areas, blah, blah, blah. If the segment provides a level of protection of critical areas at least equal to that provided by the local government's critical areas ordinances adopted and thereafter amended. So there must be equivalency between how critical areas are protected under the SMP and the CAO. You don't get to change how they're protected just by moving them under the SMP. Their ecology must make sure there's equivalency. And that's under RCW 9058090. Subsection four for anyone playing.
And that again?
RCW 9058090. Subsection four. You want to look that up yourself at a later time.
Right.
So then the only criteria would be is if we wanted to increase the requirements, which we probably wouldn't, because the CAO has plenty of requirements.
CAO was a, was a, you know, was a comprehensive update of that program when, when that was adopted. That original document was from 1994, and then the, yeah, the Critical Areas Ordinance we adopted almost 30 years later was the big update, maybe 20 years. I can't do math anymore. Yeah.
Oh, so Andrew, just for me, it doesn't necessarily mean that I have critical areas on my, if I have shoreline properties, is that right? I may not have like, or something like that.
Right, yeah.
That's what I'm kind of getting at.
It's a little confusing. It's a little confusing because, so some of the water bodies that we call shorelines are currently technically considered critical areas. So a lake, Puget Sound, the streams, those are critical areas, but they're also, the state law says these, these specific features are shorelines, right? So when we're talking about associated critical areas in shoreline jurisdiction, I'm not talking about the lake itself. I'm not talking about Puget Sound itself. I'm talking about associated wetlands or, or smaller streams that are within that shoreline jurisdiction. So think about a, a stream, think about a shoreline stream with a 200, where the, there's the 200-foot jurisdiction on it, right? The 200-foot shorelands. If there's a tributary that flows into that stream, that tributary is a stream, a stream is a critical area. So where that critical area crosses into that shoreline jurisdiction, that's what we're talking about. The protections for that stream would be included in this master program. So that, that tributary itself, maybe it's too small to be a shoreline stream itself, but because it's a critical area and because it's in shoreline jurisdiction, the SMP will now regulate it.
Do you have a ballpark of what, how much, how much shoreline that, or whatever that that would, is it 10%, 20%? Half of, you know? That's what I'm getting at is when I read through this stuff, it's complicated enough as it is. If I have to go to another section, or if there's a, an appendix that I can just read and go, that doesn't apply to me, and I don't have to read another chapter that is confusing to me already. I, I'm just trying to think, how do we simplify this document rather than add to it and make it more onerous and harder for for someone like me to understand, other people may just get it, but I don't.
Right. And I think, yeah, and yeah, big picture, as, as we've talked about, the, the, the protection of that feature and that property is going to have to happen. And we're just talking now about how are we doing that, what's efficient, what's, what's understandable. I, I absolutely feel you on that, and you know, this is, it's one of those questions where it's hard, it's hard to give you a direct answer, because a lot of these decisions about what exactly applies are made at the permit level. So we have mapping that does the best that we can, that shows where these, the ordinary high water marks and the wetlands and streams, where they are to the best of our knowledge based on the data we have. But it's not until you come in and apply for something that we can go out and look and actually measure, measure things, right? And, you know, that's why we maintain a planner on call who can try to answer those questions for people who are about to start a building project, and they can try to come in and get a, a sense of what regulations are going to apply. But, but even in that sense, when we have those sort of conversations with folks, we often don't know all the specific pieces that are going to apply until, you know, we're looking at a site-specific application and get out the rulers and start to look at the shorelines. So I'm sorry that, that that is not the best answer, what's the best answer I could give, but it's not 100% answering. I don't have, without going back and looking, you know, running some sort of analysis on the way all our critical area layers are, I couldn't really tell you.
It was a wild shot anyway.
Yeah, but, but fully respect that question.
Andrew, I think you bring up a good point, though. I think a lot of times when people are to that point, there are going to be applying for a permit and that they're going to have the assistance from the staff there at the county to really go through and identify what the regulations are and what applies. You know, I would hope that, you know, people, you know, don't suffer in silence, you know, trying to read through all of this when they are preparing to do something. And I think there is that assistance available at the county level, so.
Well, and I think that's also where explainer materials and things like that will come into play as well, and training our staff how to navigate the document. Our current planners who implement these rules help to build this draft. And, you know, I will certainly be keeping them apprised of how things potentially change as we move it through the Planning Commission, move it up through the board, because they're the ones who need to implement this at the end of the day and, you know, be that first-line defense for the public who are trying to get information. Yep. Okay, are there, so a point taken that, that we can go back and try to think about efficiencies and, you know, how to best present this information. Are there any further thoughts or discussion on that specific piece? If not, I thought we could turn our attention then to the draft document and start working through. I know there are many other exciting topics and issues in Chapter 400. So let me make a quick note and we'll get started there.
Andrew, a quick comment. We all got the copy of the postcard? And when I read the postcard, this is a generic postcard that could or should be sent to all parcels that are on shore, that are shoreline. It's not anything unique in it about the people who are having their, their parcels redesignated.
Right. And so we're going to, after, I was hoping to save some time at the end of the meeting to, to talk about the postcard.
Okay.
Doug, did you see the email that we sent out with alternate language that reflected Planning Commission direction last time? It was emailed out.
No, when did you send it?
November 24th.
Thanks, Eric.
But.
I did not get that. I know.
Well, we will make sure you do, and I can, I can, so we propose some alternate language, and I can, I can. Uh, well, we will make sure you do. And I can, I can. So we we propose some alternate language and I can, I can always pull it up on the screen when we get to that point. But yeah, I will. We will make sure that you get that email if you did not. I don't ever like to hear that. Okay, so we'll we'll make sure you get that.
Well, I'm spinning again, so.
I I just, I'll go ahead and reforward it to you so you have it.
Okay.
Okay. Outlook will cooperate. Okay, there you go. All right, let me switch gears here for a moment. Document open. And share my screen. Okay, we should all be seeing chapter 19400. Try to make that a little bit bigger for you. Okay, so I know Doug had had some comments on this chapter that were forwarded around to folks. You've you've received public comments on this chapter, so I leave it open to to you to.
How are you going to handle these staff notes and that kind of thing? I mean, my draw there is is that you would change the word to conforming and then make a note saying we could consider these other things, but how are you? Is that what it's going to look like?
Um, well, that that's the conversation we're having now. So I know, I know you commented on that and and the coalition commented on that as well. What you see here, the 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 boxes with the highlights, you know, that was my best attempt to capture your thoughts from the last go around. So we it is, that's exactly the kind of feedback that we're looking for is if you would want to see it. See it in a different way before we get to public hearing, we can certainly do that. I would say that that comment applies throughout this document, you know. In some areas, you know, we, I called it a public hearing comment or option because it's something we want the public, when they're reading through this document, to kind of mull over and give us specific feedback on it, right? It's it's in discussions with the planning commission, you know, you all wanted to see, have attention, you know, drawn to that. So this is an attempt to capture that and it's an attempt to foster that conversation and whether the planning commission wants to change something now, whether they want to wait till after the public hearing and change it. That's up to you. So if you would like to see something different and float that conversation to the group, then by all means.
I think we heard an awful lot of testimony from the significant number of shoreline property owners stating that they want it to be conforming. And even the attorneys at county have said, saying conforming is fine. So I see no reason why it shouldn't be changed to conforming. And they want to have an option to go in and say, hey, should it be legally conforming or non-conforming or something else? You know, you could do that, but I mean, we don't need to wait for for comment. We've already had it.
Okay, I, yeah, I mean, I'm open to that if that is what the planning commission wants to do. And so that this is the point where do that classic chestnut and look around to the rest of you guys and see what you what you think on this topic. And if there is broad direction from planning commission to make that change ahead of the hearing, I'm happy to.
Andy, I wanted, I know that I mentioned this at our meeting last time, two weeks ago, but when we, when you go back and you look at what the what the definitions are in 19150 and it talks about existing lots, existing structures, existing uses, that language is already in there that it was legally constructed prior to the state. I don't know why we even need the modifiers of conforming or non-conforming or grandfathered or anything else. We already know that these that for it to be an existing structure, it would have had to have been legally constructed. The term existing structure means legally constructed at the time.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of a piece of this whole discussion, too, is that regardless of what we call it, there's going to, it doesn't change the concept that you have a structure that doesn't meet current or is not going to meet the provisions of this code once it's adopted. And therefore, there are specific regulations that apply. So the definition will ultimately rule. So whatever we call the document, you know, it'll it'll live in the definition. So I think looking, yeah, so.
Andy, just just to remind everyone listening and following along, the WACs that guide that guide us on the SMP. And I'm looking at WAC 17327080 includes definitions for non-conforming use and includes the definition of a non-conforming structure means an existing structure that was lawfully constructed at the time it was built, but is no longer fully consistent regulations, which has setbacks, buffers, or yards, blah, blah, blah. So it's defined in the WACs. Non-conforming is used throughout and it's used throughout Thurston County code. I'm not saying we can't use existing. We might want to do that. I think we need to do some sort of explanation that we're still or look into at as staff with our legal team to make sure we're still kind of using it in the correct way that's going to keep us in line with state law under the WACs. So that's just my only caution.
The Act specifically says that we can call it conforming.
Only the only thing that concerns me about what we call it is all through their other, there's kind of codes, it's non-conforming. Do we get to a place where now we're kind of in a confusion state, you know, some, we're calling it whatever legally existing. And everybody else is calling their, you know, the regular code is going non-conforming. So it just seems like to me that there's going to be a certain amount of confusion to some people. And I mean, I'm getting non-conforming. I think most of the people here do, too.
I agree with Jim. And then I I I I'd like to better understand why people are so concerned about the the semantics of it in that you know, technically, you know, at that point, it would be non-conforming to the current regulations and, you know, does it potentially devalue the property? Or, you know, you think that maybe, gosh, I got a house that's not complying with, maybe it would add value to the property. So, you know, I mean.
Datus is a protective status, right? So if you're called non-conforming, it's saying you are fine, you're legally established, the regulations have changed, you're still fine. And it also allows the ability to build in specific standards for those non-conforming structures. They can expand in a certain amount, and these are built into the ordinance, right? So it provides sort of your your past to keep doing what you're doing and even doing a little bit more, even though the rules have changed. And if someone came in tomorrow on the empty lot next door, they might not be able to do the same things as you. That's what legally non-conforming, non-conforming is designed to do. So I just want everyone to be on that same page. And I understand that people don't like the word. I just, there's so much about it in the WACs and in our other codes that I'm keeping it in as an option would be my preference, at least to go to public hearing, or at least to have that conversation with folks at public hearing about the use of that.
Comparing the two, they are not the same. Comparing non-conforming to the building code to the non-conforming in this document is not the same. The only thing non-conforming about the majority of these structures we're talking about is that they're built in the buffer. They can be rebuilt in the same footprint without this document doing anything about it. Without it applying. It's it's, but in the code, if your house is non-conforming, you have to upgrade your electrical, you have to you have to upgrade your plumbing, you have to upgrade, upgrade, upgrade in order to meet the code. That's two totally different things. And as far as waiting to have people talk about it, my point is still there. We have had significant testimony, more testimony than we will get in a public hearing, except for the same people. And more testimony than we will get in an open house already.
Great. I think we've beat this to death several times in the past. And in my opinion, the staff note is the option that at the the last time we discussed this is the option that the planning commission came up with. So I just want to get a stretch because I'm I'm perfectly fine leaving it like that until if we decide to change it, I think we should wait till after the public hearing.
Agreed. And to, okay, so and if if that's what the planning commission chooses, I just to address a couple of other comments, I know we've received from the public. Whatever, whatever you all land on is what will change throughout the document. So this note is here in place of having already gone through and changed it throughout the document. Whatever the planning commission lands on is what would go throughout. And also this paragraph at the top that's currently in red text could potentially change or go away depending on where this whole thing shakes out. So I just want to put that out there because I know that folks have have been interested in this language and have commented on that in the past. We're going to back over to you all.
Was that everybody's will?
I'm I'm good with waiting to public, public hearing.
Yeah, I think I think that if a public hearing with these options is going to be fine. If nothing else, it will certainly drive out public interest.
And and that is the intent, exact intent of these comment boxes. And, you know, again, I do want to make sure as we go through that the different places where we've noted that y'all want people to pay attention to, that that it is done correctly. And we can revisit those as we get to them. Okay. So who would like to offer up a comment or question?
140183.
I do, we wouldn't make it far. Okay, go ahead.
Change in use. Would the conversion of a shoreline residence to VRBO or BNB or BNB be allowed? Just limit that?
I don't think so. I don't think so. And I I have trying to think about, because I had someone talk to him about a property that they wanted to convert. There was a guest house that was going to become potentially the primary structure and it was, you know, going to be within the buffer. So technically, is that a change in use? You know, and I talked to ecology about that, and I I don't think so. So I think I think if you have residential use and you have people coming and staying in a property, you're potentially going to have fewer people there for less time. That's not going to be booked every single day, perhaps. So there might be, it might be a less intense use. So I I could run that to ground, but when I read that, I don't think about that's, I don't think that it does. But I would need to look into that. But I think that's a good I think that's a good piece for me to chase down because I think other people will ask that. So I will float that up to ecology.
So in exist and be one D is says that you can only add 1,000 square foot to for a second floor. Because if I have a 2,000 square foot, one story home, why am I limited to just if I'm just on the same footprint, adding only 1,000 foot?
Right. And so the allowance of a structure to expand, a structure that's in the buffer to be able to expand it landward under this draft master program, that is a newly proposed flexibility for for the shorelines.
This isn't, this isn't landward, though. This is just adding the second, second story, the way I read it. Am I reading wrong?
Well, it's so that the 1,000 square foot is if you already have, if you're if you're doing 500 on the ground. It's 1,000 going up. It's basically saying you get a 500 square foot footprint on the ground. And in this instance, if you wanted to do a second floor on that, you know, this is this is specifically saying that that is okay.
It's okay. I'm reading it as limited to.
Limited to 500 square foot addition to the back. And then you can go two stories, so it becomes 1,000.
Exactly.
So if you have 100 foot wide house, you can only add 500 square feet to the back or, you know.
Okay, I get that. I'm trying to understand if I'm just, if I want to add a complete second floor, why is that not allowed? I'm not doing anything. What am I doing this screwing it up?
So you're saying adding a second floor within the within the existing footprint, so essentially expanding only upward and not backward at all.
It says you can do that under C, right? Or E, I'm sorry. The addition of your stories is permitted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer, because I was going to say that seems like something that we could potentially allow. There wouldn't be a reason not to. And so it, yeah, letter E there says it's permitted to add an upper story. And then, but then ties you back to the other piece if you were going to add on to the back.
So while we're on that section, the D is a copy from Spokane SMP. It's not something ecology came up with or anything else. It's just people have picked it up from Spokane. Ecology is okay with expanding landward the whole width of the structure. Why don't we allow people to do that? Why do we limit 500 square feet?
I don't recall the specific history for why it's the 500. If I think that's an example of something that if you want to see it that way as a body proposed in here, we could certainly do that. And in the meanwhile, I could run that back and make sure there isn't some reason why not. But I'm not familiar with the, are you talking about? Was this like, I mean, and Sarah was with the planning commission and made a comment like that? Or are you aware of a specific statute that I can look at?
I'm aware that Sarah told us at a planning committee meeting that adding anything to the back, whether it's 100 square feet or 500 square feet, she doesn't care if it goes all the way across the back because you've already impacted the.
Yeah, her position was as long as we don't go into the wildlife corridors, how much we do behind the building doesn't matter. How much development happens behind the building doesn't matter at that point, as long as we don't intrude into the wildlife corridors on the sides.
And presumably, the the mitigation would be commensurate with the square footage. Like, if you're only going half of the width of your structure, your mitigation would be smaller than you're doing the whole thing.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
For a good portion of the residences, this won't really impact anyway, because it's if it's shoreline residential, typically the back of the house is going to be outside of the the buffer anyway. But when you get to the natural area or or conservancy area or those or marine area or something like that, where you have a buffer of of 100 feet, 200 feet, you could conceivably have a lot of structures that would be limited by this 500. My recommendation is that we go, we say, have some words that say the the width of the structure.
But don't expand, it doesn't expand beyond the width of the current structure.
Right. I'm wondering, and I'm thinking about different configurations of property and if there would be the need to put any sort of sideboard on that where, you know, perhaps someone doesn't go the whole width of their house, but they say, you know, well, my neighbor did that and I don't want to do the whole width of my house, but I'd like the same square footage they got in a different configuration and pushing that. Yes, it would continue to go landward, but we know that those, if you're still within the shoreline buffer, that's still providing some function if it's vegetated. So I wonder if there's a need to to put a sideboard on that. But that's something I could explore. My my thought is, you know, that's something that Doug is supporting. It's something that Eric has seconded. So if that is the will of the planning commission, then I'm happy to to make a note to to make that change for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Are there other folks who?
Any else?
I'm gonna make sure I can see everybody. So how, what do other folks think about about that?
I'm good. That sounds good.
Chris, more flexibility?
All right, one second. So I can't tell if having the way I have your faces is blocking what I'm typing there, but okay. So I am commemorating that. And like I said, I'll, I will verify that, that that's all all good. I don't think I was at that particular meeting, but it is in the document and that is how it shall read. Who got the next comment?
I know we talked about this prior and I don't know if there's a, an easy way around this, but on H, that same section, any legally existing structure that is relocated must be brought into conformance with the act and this program. That doesn't, that doesn't leave any room for like, like we know of houses that are 27 feet from the ordinary high watermark. If he wanted to, if somebody that had a house that was that close, that was built in, you know, the 19 teens and he wanted to move it back to the 35 feet from the ordinary high watermark, he wouldn't actually be allowed. He'd have to bring it all the way back to the 50. So minor increments in making more shoreline areas would not be allowed. You either got to do it all the way or not do it at all. Is there anything we can do that would make it so we can encourage even minor improvements to shoreline function without having to go full bore?
I'd have to look at that. I, so I could research that and get back to you. I know that the, that's how the critical areas ordinance operates. If you were wishing to, I mean, if you're wishing to replace your structure, just discretionary or discretion, I think it has to go out of the buffer. So I would have to look at that. And let you know, let's see.
I'm looking at the WAC and it says a non-conforming structure which has moved any distance must be brought as closely as practicable into conformance with the applicable master program and the act. So I don't know what that really means, but.
So Jennifer, is that the, you, let's see, is that the 173 27 080?
Yes.
Okay. So I think something, and something to keep in mind that I didn't bring up earlier is that ecology has said shoreline jurisdictions have the ability to adopt their own provisions for legally existing structures. If jurisdictions do not do that, then ecology has language that will apply by default. So, but that gives a pretty good hunch or a good hint, I think, that that's the type of language they're going to be looking for. So this could be one of those things where you know, that could, if we don't put it in there, they're going to say, we won't approve the master program unless that is in there. So I would just.
Remember like last meeting, we talked about a section that had encouraging people to do things or rewards. What was the right word? The section about something in I think it was in 300. That we encourage people to do extra stuff. Incentives, I guess it was. This, that could be one of the incentives, you know, do something that you moved it back. You know, like my house is 28 feet back because it was built before, when, when the setback was 25 feet. And so, but if my house was burnt down, I would probably want to build it at 35 feet, which would be or maybe even 40, but at least further back. And, but it wouldn't, but I wouldn't because I'd have to go 50 feet and then I'd be looking at my neighbors' houses.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be good to be able to say that this is an incentive. I don't know how many people would do it. Sarah, Sarah was shocked when we asked this before and she was in the meeting. She said, why would anybody want to move their house back? Well, because maybe they don't want to be that close. I mean, there are reasons for doing it.
Yeah, we, you know, we, we hear folks concerned about erosion of the shoreline and, you know, all those sort of things and wanting to be proactive. So if that is something that the planning commission wants me to explore, I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, I, I would like to see if we can at least have that option to have incremental more protection without having to go full bore because sometimes it, you know, it would kill a project to do that and Doug's kid would kill a project to either, he'd either have to stay at 28 feet or go all the way to 50 and never go to 35 or 40, which would definitely be better than the 28.
Okay. And I think I saw tile nodding as well on that piece. So make my permission to explore that further. So let me make a note on that. Other structure could be.
Yeah, 105 A two. Essentially, this is a good example of the difference between marine and, and lake shoreline, shorelines and that you know, degrading of the, of the shoreline is primarily something that happens on marine versus lake fronts, other than the fact that these new boats are starting to do damage.
So you're saying perhaps that would be a regulator, it might be appropriate in one shoreline type versus another to have that flexibility?
Something to differentiate between the two so that I'm not sure exactly how to, to state it, but.
Yeah. Hang on a sec. Well, let me, at the very least, let me just add it to this and just, we can look at that. And would there be a difference depending on shoreline water body type? Thought is not lost. Okay. Who's next?
My, my next one is 110 B five. For mitigation that you have used money for. Not a mitigation, it's says, but after the effective date of this program, what does that mean?
That means whatever date this master program takes effect. So it's a date in the future. It's saying that if, if, if you have a site where you have to do mitigation that, and you've done restoration activities within the last 10 years, but after the date that this program was adopted, because we don't have all the standards in place, you know, to, to make this whole thing work yet, right? So this will become an option that will be available to people once the master program has been adopted.
Okay. So we do it again in eight years. So you, so let, let's say this thing is adopted in next year and somebody does something that's, that's mitigation. But they're not mitigating for anything in particular. They're just doing something that's good for the shoreline or for the water and water quality. And then we redo it in 10 years and now their mitigation is no longer any good. Because it's going to say the same thing next time around.
Yeah. Well, the so it was changed from three to 10 at the discretion of the planning commission. This, that's something that, that you asked to have it be increased. And so yeah, I mean, there's no, so, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I don't remember it being, us asking for it to be increased to 10. I don't know where that came from, but.
I, well, let me see, I have my notes here.
Green, so it's you. And so I would have been there, I would think.
Yeah, it was, I think it, well, I think the, the, the goal was to say, okay, if I, if I do a restoration project, I can, I can use it as credit for a future development for the next three years or for longer than that. And I think that the, the goal there was to provide more flexibility to people to say, if you did something good for the shoreline on your property, you can reap the benefit of that on your shoreline project for the next 10 years.
I like that.
And I like that too, but that isn't what this says. Because you'll have a new program again eight years from now and 10 year, it starts over again.
Yeah.
So why, why would we just, you know, get rid of the sentence, but after the effective date of this program? Because it's not going to be in place until this program is in place anyway.
Yeah. And then that would mean though, that any, well, so if, if you think about it that way, and, and this, if this gets adopted next year, then it's saying that people who have done these restoration activities within the past 10 years, so back to 2011 could take advantage of this. But then we have all these standards down below about what you need to do to make it work. So there could be restoration activities people did that don't meet these standards and it wouldn't apply to them anyway. So.
It's got to meet these standards.
Okay. Yeah. I don't need to have you guys watch my wheels turn here. But yeah, I'm, I'd have to look at that and see what the ramifications of that would be if there is.
I mean, if the 10 year thing was what our intent was when we brought it up last time, then we ought to make that, that a fact.
Yeah.
This doesn't.
Okay. Yeah, I can. I could look at that. I could also, that's something we could ask ecology about because I know they have, they have a lot of thoughts about this whole piece about advanced restoration. And there might be something in the guidance that they offer that is instructive.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. And that phrase, by the way, is going to be throughout this document in different places. So for, for different things, just FYI, or at least that's how the critical areas ordinance works. Let me just make a note. Because you're right. I mean, these, whatever standards we end up putting to this to say, you gotta, you gotta put up, you know, a, a solid project to be able to reap this benefit. Those standards would apply. So if someone did something, but doesn't meet whatever the standards are, then it wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to use it. So it's, yeah.
It seems like you can delete that phrase you have highlighted and at the end of the paragraph say, so long as the restoration project meets the standards of this section or something like that.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I just, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't recall why that would have been inserted here, what, what the reasoning was. And if there is a reason not to do it. So, okay. Let me just say, consider striking and adding. Well, I think it might already say that you have to meet these things down here. Okay. Well, kind of, but not really. So let me, let me make that note. Great. Happy to look at that. Okay. Also before next, next one, I know that SMP is the only thing on the agenda technically, but I do want to be mindful of, of the time. I think we're roughly an hour. You know, I'm not going anywhere, but just wanted to put that out there. Okay. Who has the next comment for thought?
110 B five B. That in this case, it's a three year. It has to be in, in use for three years. Our three year waiting period. I assume that's because we want to make sure the, the bushes get established or the tree gets established or something else, but it's why do we force them to wait three years to take credit for? Are we going to require them to do other mitigation in the meantime, if they want to move ahead with their project? Or what? Well, this is just banking, but.
I think you want to, I think the goal is to make sure that the, the project is, is working as intended, right? That it actually is functioning. You know, before you then go ahead and allow another impact, therefore if, if it wasn't functioning correctly, it's not really mitigation, right? It's not, it's not mitigating for that impact. So it, it's making sure that it's, it's working. And that's why this, the pink language there was added. So if, if, if it is a planting vegetation and that vegetation grows quickly and is, is up and all set and fully mature in 18 months, then okey dokey. You, you are able to use that. So I, I think, I don't remember specifically where the three years came from, but I know that the planning commission was interested in saying, does it have to be three years? Can it happen sooner than that? And that's what the pink language is meant to reflect.
And this kind of implies to me that if I, if I wanted to do a project and I go to get a building permit and I'm required to do some mitigation, that I would have to do the mitigation and wait three years before I could do the project. That's what I'm concerned about.
And I don't, I don't think so. So if you, if you are, if, if you have a shoreline property and you are doing a project that requires mitigation, I don't think that you're required to have that. For a brand new project, I don't think you're required to have the mitigation fully, fully bloomed or whatever you want to say there before you can, you know, break ground. But there are sureties that must be provided. There is a monitoring schedule, I believe, and you know, potentially financial sureties have to be put up so that you know it's going to work. Yeah, I don't know. To my knowledge, if you're, you know, building a new home on the shoreline or you're expanding or something like that and it requires mitigation, we don't require, if it's planting, I don't think we require it to be fully grown before the impact can occur.
Well, as long as we're not delaying people three years before they can do, move ahead with their project, I'm fine with it, but.
And maybe, I mean, maybe a way to do this would be rather than say three years or to say something like it must be fully operational or full, meeting all of its checking all the boxes, right? It's fully functioning as designed and intended. I think that's the intent. So that could be an option. But as, as written, it's not holding people, it's not, it's not holding you to three years as written.
I originally read that. I was kind of same page as Doug. It's like, I gotta do this restoration and wait for three years. So maybe it, it's a wording of it that needs to be changed somehow. And I don't know exactly how that is. But that's what I felt too, that I had to wait three years before I could turn dirt on my project. And that seemed very unreasonable. And I guess other question is too, is if you do, if you're able to start your project and for some reason the mitigation doesn't work, what, just what kind of penalty is there? What is there somewhere in there that'll say this, now you're?
Yeah. So this section is specifically for advanced restoration. If you're wanting to proactively do some sort of restoration on the shoreline, but you might in the future want to use it as mitigation, this is how you do that. So the standards for mitigation for, for projects is other, other types of projects is further below in this document.
Maybe just to be saying that it's fully functional prior instead of a time limit.
Yeah. Yeah. Again, and I, I would need to revisit exactly where the green came from to understand the three years, but I think that's the intent is that it's, it's operational. So, okay. So, okay. Great.
Next one I have is 120 B4.
Oh, 120, okay, sorry. Going in the wrong direction.
You mind, you mind if we hit something in 115 before we go to 120?
Sure.
In, in 115, when we talk about 115D, critical saltwater habitats, and then three, and it lists critical saltwater habitats include, um, is there any way that we can limit these to native species? Cause like, um, 3B is eelgrass beds, well, we know that like Japonica is a invasive species of eelgrass, so there's no reason to call that a critical saltwater habitat when it's a invasive species.
So, critical saltwater habitat, I'm pretty confident is a definition we might be stuck with from the, from the RCW or the WAC, whichever it is. That is a, that's a specific term that the state identifies. So we could look at chapter 19, 150 here, where the definition actually lies and see what it says there, if it makes that distinction, or if state law makes that distinction. I, I could verify that, but, um.
Okay, okay, if we could look into that, it'd be good, I, I would just think that it'd be a little bit ridiculous to call invasive species, critical saltwater habitat, if we don't have to.
That's really easy, I can verify that, I, I, I can verify whether or not we're stuck with it, uh, or if, if that's something we can change, or very.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so Doug, you had something in 120?
E4.
B4.
I actually have some stuff before that, but.
I don't think we're gonna totally finish 400 tonight, so I think you'll have your chance.
Uh, B4, um, if the buffer is, is lawn, you know, so the buffer and is lawn, why do we still need the 15 foot setback? Cause buffer, the setback is to protect the native untouched buffer area. The grass certainly isn't.
So the second sentence in that paragraph is intended to allow some flexibility to reduce that building setback. Uh, you know, if the resulting setback is protective of the existing vegetation in the buffer, but what that doesn't do is say, if your entire buffer in front of your house, or in front of where your building is, is grass, is lawn grass, um, which will, you know, in theory, grow back, once you're finished constructing the home to the way it looked before, should that setback be required? That's kind of making. Um, I think that's a, I think that's a good point to explore. I think that is potentially a change that we could make. Uh, I think the, the goal would be not to disturb or lose native vegetation that's providing function on the shoreline, but if it's, if it's lawn, maybe that should be different. So is that the, is that the point you were making, is that?
Point, yeah, yeah. We don't need to protect the grass.
Right.
But, but why would you not be able to replace native vegetation as well?
Um, I mean, the intent here is that the buffer is providing, so that you don't disturb the buffer during construction, right? That's the whole goal, and so if, if you have to replace it, or replace something that implies that you're, you know, damaging it. Um, and so, but to Doug's point, you know, lawn grass, um, is not gonna be the same as, you know, existing native vegetation, and I think we make some different, we make different, uh, there's different ratios that are provided. If you, if you have to impact something to build on your property, and then we prescribe mitigation for that, there's a different ratio for lawn versus native vegetation. If it's native, you know, Pacific Northwest forest with classic fern understory, you're gonna have to do more mitigation than if it was all sawed all the way to the, to the waterfront. So it might be appropriate to have that reflected in this piece here as well. So. Yeah, and then after, yeah, of course, after construction, that area is not required to, it doesn't have restrictions on it. Uh, it can be used for lawn, et cetera. Um, so I think that would be a good thing to consider, because I think that's flexibility for property owners. Um, so I'm certainly amenable to that, if that is what the planning commission would like to propose.
So I, I think I've called this conversation in the past. Now, does this, with the additional 15 foot building setback, does that mean that it's on top of the, does that push my building back 65 feet? I'm unsure, like.
Yes. Unless, unless it can be closer, because, um, you know, that either the, whatever means of construction are not going to impact that area, or if we make some sort of change that says, if you are lawn or something to that degree, uh, it, it is not, it's not required, or it can be smaller.
So in actuality, if there's the room, and I don't get variance, the, say, for instance, the shoreline buffer is 65 feet.
Well, the buffer is, the, the buffer is 50, the setback is 15, the effective distance that you would be from the water, the ordinary high watermark, would be 65 feet, correct? That area is, uh, able to be used for lawn landscaping, all those sorts of things, but the structure itself, uh, must be, you know, behind that construction setback, whatever it ends up being. 15 feet as well.
I mean, it's a little deceiving. You know, it's like, or it's 65 feet.
Well, I, uh, I think the upper section above, uh, might reference it, and if it doesn't, we could certainly add it. So that is clear.
Okay.
I can, I can check if the setback is referenced.
I understand the purpose of the extra 15 feet tip for like, construction and equipment driving around it. Then you're telling me my, if I want my building at 15 feet, then I can't, and if I want my building at 50 feet from the shoreline, then I can't do the 15 feet, so I have to be back 65 feet in order to do the 15. Is that correct? Am I thinking right?
Uh, it's saying that the, so if we don't make any, if we don't, if there are not changes to this section, and the buff, that, that setback cannot be reduced, the 15 feet would be on top of the 50 in that shoreline residential designation.
So would anybody ever be able to build a house at the 50 foot mark? Or would there, would it always be 50 feet of buffer and 15 feet of setback?
I think it would depend on what people propose, um, so the setback may be reduced, providing that the resulting setback is protective of existing vegetation within the buffer. So that to me indicates that when someone makes a proposal to develop a property, if through the designs that they submit, and the, the, the construction practices they submit as part of their overall plan, if they can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the reviewer that, that buffer would not be harmed, then it could be a smaller distance.
But I assume if, if they did want to go at the 50 foot versus the 65, they could get a variance and mitigate for that extra 15 feet, correct?
Uh, potentially, I'd have to look at the variance section, it's possible that variance might be restricted to only if there is a, like a, uh, constraint on the lot. Uh, I do know that reducing the buffer, as written, I believe, reducing the shoreline residential buffer below 50 feet requires a, a, a type three variance versus a smaller one. And I know we're gonna get into all that stuff, but I think it, it is a bigger deal than perhaps trying to get a commensurate reduction in a different shoreline environment designation, because it's already 50 feet.
As I recall from reading the ecology handbook, they say in there that various SMPs have written up, without saying a buffer plus setback. They've called it a setback and not a buffer, and they just got a total number, they've called it a buffer, including the setback, which is a total number. Um, so as I recall, we have the option of just having one number, and not dealing with this 15 foot at all, without having any problem with ecology based on the handbook.
That strikes me as vaguely familiar, uh, from, it's been a while since I've read the buffer chapter of the handbook, but I think, I, I mean, I think you're correct, I think there are different approaches that jurisdictions have taken to this specific issue.
And they're all acceptable, according to the book. I mean, I would just soon get rid of the 15 foot buffer and get rid of the, uh, which gets rid of the confusion.
To get rid of the, get, just get rid of the setback?
The 15 foot buffer, yeah, the setback, but it was.
I'm a little bit with you on that, Doug, but what, what the concern comes into my head when I start thinking about that is, then if I build on this, on the 65 foot, right at the 65 foot buffer, can I put a 10 foot deck on the water side? Where with the setback, I would at least have that 15 foot to do something like.
But you, but you got that option anyway. With this, don't.
If you make it 65 foot for deal, 50 feet. But I'm saying, if you make it a 65 foot buffer now, do you have that option?
I think it's all in, it's gonna be how you, how we characterize these things, right? And so i- if, if, whatever you call it, if you, if you add the 15 feet into the buffer, if you leave it as a buffer and setback, or if you get rid of the setback, ultimately, you know, ecology is gonna need to know that the buffers are being protected, right? And that the vegetation in those buffers are being protected, so somehow that's gonna have to happen. There's gonna need to be some sort of sideboard on this, where, you know, if we do allow that, I mean, think about, so we have the buffers, but think about how are you protecting the function of those buffers? And how are you mitigating for impacts to those buffers? Because if we reduce that setback and basically say there isn't one, how are you then protecting the buffer during construction?
Andrew, is it a mandatory 15 feet, or is it dependent upon the construction footprint?
This is, reads for all types of buildings, is 15 feet. Uh, I think you're, the answer to your question, uh, it could partially depend on how, what they're applying for, uh, would potentially dictate the construction method, the equipment involved, et cetera, and those different types of construction methods might have different impacts in that 15 foot area, or might not even impact out to 15 feet, so.
That's what I'm getting at, if the construction, if the construction footprint only is five foot away from the building, why do you need a 15 foot setback?
You wouldn't. That's what this is saying, so if, if the, if, if what, through whatever, because this is, I mean, think about it, someone who's developing a property, they see the buffer, they see that the setback requirement is there, that's an incentive for them to, to, you know, design the project to be constructed in a way that, that minimizes the impact on the, on the, the property, and then potentially that area could be reduced, and they could get closer to the buffer. Cause at the end of the day, the goal is to, is to protect that buffer during construction, and a 15 foot setback is not the only way to, to accomplish that goal.
So I would like to see you just look at what the handbook says, and see what options we could have here. That's my druther.
Eric shaking, or nodding, rather, not shaking. Uh, okay, Jim, and, okay. Right, uh, sure. All right. Uh, how are folks feeling? Uh, remember, I, we did want to save some time for the postcard conversation?
Can we finish with five and stop at C?
Sure.
Okay, if everybody else is okay with that, I got a small one with, with five right here on Butterwitz may be increased. And one of the reasons for that would be an area of inadequate vegetation to protect water quality has been identified by the project reviewer. How is that quantified? What, what constitutes an inadequate vegetation? I mean, we know what marine bluffs and landslide hazards are, those are all codified, and what they mean, and what a steep slope means, and we know what important habitat means, but how do we know what inadequate vegetation to protect water quality means?
Uh, that's something I would want to check with our current planners. Uh, one, how do they look at that today? Cause that provision currently exists in our critical areas ordinance, but I'm not aware of too many provision, too many times where that has been implemented, where we have in- increased the standard buffer. Uh, and two, to see what the intent was when this was written. So I'm guessing that there is, there may be some specific scenarios, uh, but if it's vague and it's not clear to us what those might be, I can understand concern about how this would be wielded.
Thank you.
So, okay, yeah. Let me just, because I think that is, I will make a unilateral decision and, um, look into this. Okay. So I will, we'll pause there, um, and we can come back next time. And we'll switch gears, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. Okay, so we sent out, um, after the last planning commission meeting on the 18th, sent out, uh, the draft postcard that we showed during the meeting, and asked the planning commission to consider some additional language, um, you know, and, and basically put all that in front of you, and let you ruminate on it, and now we'd like to circle back and see what sort of thoughts, um, you have about that. So let, let her rip.
Were you gonna put that up, um, Andrew?
I don't, I can, yeah, I don't have the, um, hang on a sec, I have the postcard that I sent out, and I have, I'll just put up the email that I sent.
That'd be great.
Now, just give me a, give me a minute here, I'm gonna, if I can fix it so that your, uh, all your email addresses don't show on there. You can do that. Hold on a sec, I am going to, um, open that information just in a new Word document. Okay. Almost got it. Okay, great, so, um, as we heard some comments, the, there were concerns, uh, and thoughts that the language on the postcard that was sent out would be potentially, not descriptive enough, and so we have proposed some additional language we wanted you to consider, and it's not pretty on the, the postcard format right now, but this is the, this is the next attempt to get something that might work a little better, so would be happy to hear your thoughts.
I guess, I, I like this new language, it's, it's kind of, it, it does explain more that, you know, it kind of puts urgency on these people, but I guess I, they need to, uh, or maybe it was on the other side, I'm, I'm trying to remember, uh, another, if they can't make the virtual open house, how do they, how do they contact or find out the information?
Okay, so here, hooray, I figured it out, so here, this is. Okay, so here, hooray, I figured it out. So here, this is this is what you saw last time. Um, so there's a little uh, there's a web link on there that is going to stay on there and essentially if people go to it later, it should still let them launch all the materials. So all the materials that are being prepared will will continue to live on that website, and there will still be a a comment form and the ability for people to contact staff, much like today, if you go on the website, you can uh send a message to staff about all different types of of topics. That those links will be on that page. Uh, and Jennifer and I have also talked about doing kind of two different periods of what I'm calling rapid response, where staff is actively monitoring and trying to respond to those messages within a twenty-four hour period or one to two business days. Kind of when the when when it goes first goes online and there's a lot of interest, and then if you miss that, that we would do that type of thing again later on.
Will will they be able to go to that uh mapping site that they can see where their property was categorized before? And what is now?
Yes. So the designation tool that we first created for planning commission but are rolling gonna be rolling out to the public, yes, people will be able to and toggle between the current shoreline environment designation and what the proposal is. And then we have a second tool that shows all the different jerk pieces of shoreline jurisdiction. So there'll be two different tools for people to explore um interactively.
And I think I think within the map, as they're switching between the designations, they should be able to click out to the fact sheet that explains what the designations mean.
Yes, thank you.
When did you say the public will have access to that tool?
With with the open house, when we launch all of it, that's the current plan is to that the the draft that we are now building with input from the planning commission is kind of the cornerstone of the whole next phase of this public outreach, and that this would launch um with that whenever whenever we are done with this round of review and I've incorporated all your changes.
I would hope that it would be active when this postcard is mailed.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. And it's going to stay up for several weeks. Uh, we've talked about, you know, a good four to six weeks from when we launch it to when you all would have your public hearing. So.
Is there anything on the website that says that the if if they disagree with this, they need to take formal action now or they're in deep due to?
There isn't currently the shoreline environment designation report and all the um existing or all the supporting materials are on the website, but there's no there's no narrative or or description to that effect at this point.
And I know the general public doesn't necessarily know that how difficult it is to change the designation after the fact, even if they don't agree.
Yeah, I mean, we have general, we have the general ability for people to submit comments on anything shorelines related or any other county project for that matter. Uh, but we have not drawn specific attention to that piece or to any other piece of the document. It's just all the stuff is posted online that you all are looking at, and um there's the ability for people to contact staff with questions and comments.
I think Andy on the fact sheet about shoreline environment designations, we could put if you have a question about your designation, um, go here and just cert, you know, just make everything all connected so that they link into the uh comment box or whatever.
Have the fact sheets connect to the comment form?
Well, yeah, like tell them where to go if they have questions about their designation very specifically in the fact sheet.
Okay.
Does that get to you? Like, what do I do with this information and I don't understand it, or I have a disagreement, um, telling them specifically, go here and and tell us that would be helpful.
Okay.
I think I think there's a there was a good point there. Um, if somebody wants to appeal the designation, can they see how to do that? Or is there a link also that they can go to, or is it, it does say it somewhere in there that if you want to appeal this, you're, or do they not have a choice?
Well, they don't have to peel it because it's full draft, right? So all they have to do at this point is is comment as part of the um public process that we are launching to say, I don't agree with this proposed, you know, designation for these reasons. Now they'll have to provide pretty solid reasons and then
I get what you're saying, Jennifer, but then if it changes and it's not what they want, do they have an an app? Or do they have a way to say?
You mean, once the board, the full adoption happens and the designations are in, do they have a chance to appeal that?
Yeah, I guess so. That's pretty much down the road, I guess, but yeah.
That would require uh an amendment to the master program. So there are some, there are some uh inter interpretations within the master program as to how we would apply those designations. There's rules in there for if you're a parcel that seems to be on the edge of two different designations or two different reach breaks, how we would look at that. Um, and you know, for those areas that potentially apply that where the master program applies, but that we didn't include it in our master program for some reason, how how we look at those things. But if if it's simply this designation is not correct, I have, you know, the evidence to prove it's not correct and uh I want this changed. That requires a master program amendment. So Jennifer's right, that the time to do that is prior to having this full piece full master program being updated.
So so Andy, if somebody wanted to challenge their SED at this particular point before the board and ecology adopts this SMP, is there a uh uh process lined out that somebody can go and look at and see how they can challenge this and who they need to talk to and and what materials they need to bring to bring challenge for this?
There is not a formal one, no, and there hasn't been through throughout this update. So I have been contacted by folks uh who have those questions. I'm currently working on three of those to bring back to the mission two that are off at Lake and one that is on Lake Lawrence. Uh, and for you all to see as part of this overall package, but essentially people need to bring those those concerns to staff with with, and we can you know, talk about uh what the whacks and what the draft says about the designations and why things are being proposed the way they are. And if they have information counter to that, uh, we can consider that. And I don't think it's one size fits all. It's it's, you know, and it's it is informal at this point, because we do not have a formal uh delineated process for doing that, and there's certainly nothing codified to that effect.
The process in the past for comments from the public is you, the staff has decided that everything comes to the planning commissioners and then we decide what we want to bring up and point out and discuss and maybe change. I think this categorization section should be different. I think we need to have a process where anybody who I I'm gonna use the word complains, but I don't mean could, you know, complaining person. I mean, someone who objects to the categorization um that you evaluated and bring it before us and justify it. That's what I would like to see.
That's what we're doing. I mean, that it's it, that is, that's the plan with these three that I'm working on is to finish my analysis of those and bring those to you.
I think that's exactly the process as you spelled out. There would be, someone would get the postcard, they would go check out the map, they would you know, either get confused about how to use the map and then contact staff and staff would assist, or they would be able to use the map and figure things out and disagree potentially and comment to staff and staff would investigate. And then bring that um back to the planning commission, the results of that look and sort of like, here's what we proposed. Here's what this person is saying. Here's some of the rationale. What direction should we go?
Right. That's right. And I think as we kind of touched on at the last meeting, you know, if we have a flood of of interest in this area and end up with a ton of requests to work through, then we will certainly have to reassess at that point as to how we're going to, you know, process all those things.
I think you should plan for having a lot. I think this is gonna be a big deal for a lot of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the thinking behind having a lengthy kind of period of time for people to get in and and give us questions. And I think probably say I lean towards six weeks in between the launch and the and the hearing and then um we'll see, we'll see how much goes on and we may have to adjust plans as we're going on the timing of that.
Oh, sorry, Eric, what was that?
I like this wording a whole lot better than the than the first proposed one, because I think this one does um let people know that they need to pay attention.
The only thing I saw was, and maybe it was just an oversight, because we're sending this out to people whose designation is changing. But the title says your shoreline designation may be changing.
I know, because it's proposed to change, so it's a little awkward, right? Your shoreline designation is proposed to change? I don't know, because it's not a done deal that is changing, right? That's why we're having this process.
Right. Yeah, I mean.
It's gonna change if it stays the same. They don't do anything, because we're not gonna change it. So it is will.
So do you like uh your shoreline designation is proposed to change?
I I would, I would just give, I would change it from your to just shoreline designations are changing, because all SEDs are changing anyways from nineteen ninety till now. So just shoreline designations are changing.
That's true. I mean, I talk about Coke and the new Coke, right? For for you have something that's called natural, and you have something that's called natural on both sides of this thing, but they aren't exactly the same. Um, I that would be more inclusive. So. Okay. Okay. I think that and that's even more concise. Okay. Is proposed. Okay, so we can chew on that. That's really good feedback. Um, are there any other thoughts before we leave this topic? Otherwise, I think that was really productive and thank you. All I have to say about that.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, do we have any staff updates?
Uh, oh, sorry. Um, briefly, the board has been cranking along with all the planning commission recommendations that you've sent up their way around uh ex rural accessory dwelling units. They came to an agreement today and they should be taking action on that ordinance on, it looks like December fifteenth. Um, the comp plan amendments uh are still, they're gonna have a second uh work session to talk about the mineral lands options. Um, they had a briefing on that today, post-public hearing, and I think they have a second work session scheduled for December ninth. And it is at that one that they will determine what they want to move forward to act on. And then uh wrap recycled asphalt processing. They also made a preliminary uh decision today to move forward with the planning commission recommendation on on rap. And so that should be coming to them um as part of the comp plan amendment package, so December fifteenth. So it's a kind of a lot of work coming at them from all your hard work all year. And so it's kind of exciting to see potentially three major projects coming to a conclusion this December. So I'll keep you posted once final action occurs.
Did, did you say which way they went with on ADUs?
Yeah, they uh ADU's is remarkably similar to the planning commission recommendation based on public comment they received. There were some additional options that staff developed in in conjunction with our legal uh legal team. And so it was around conversions. So we heard a lot that people were concerned about who could convert what accessory structure at what point in time. Um, and concerns about building one tomorrow and the next day converting it to an ADU is sort of a an end around um the density restrictions and um, you know, all options were presented to the board. There is a discussion um and they landed on I believe preliminarily, they haven't taken final action. They landed on uh a structure has to have been in place for a year before you can then convert it to be an ADU. So kind of a phased approach to address some of the public concerns that they heard at hearing and written testimony. So compromise and I think it was a two to one vote on that one. Yeah.
Okay, uh, is there anybody that's not available on December sixteenth? Okay, about January sixth, two thousand twenty-one. I don't think I will be at that meeting.
So Jim, will you be able to step up and run it on the sixth?
We'll give it a shot.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
I just want to say thank you very much, Andrew, for all the work that you put into this. It's not an easy topic, and so I appreciate all that you've done, so. Thank you.
Okay, it's eight thirty-six and we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all. Good night.